Good morning and welcome to our January 3, 2017 Henry County Board of Commissioners meeting this morning. Well, it's nine o'clock and we're going to begin by the invocation and pledge of allegiance. But before I ask my pastor TJ McBride to come forth, there are a couple of announcements that we'd like to make. First of all, Commissioner Dee Clemmons of District Two is out of town and unable to join us due to a previous commitment that she could not change, and she just expressed again that her heart is here with us. Also, we also ask that you please just join us in a moment of silence in recognition of our Henry County Sheriff Deputy Thomas Palmer who lost his life in an automobile accident on December the 21st. So we ask that you keep he and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Now, I ask that you would please rise and join me for the invocation to be given by our pastor Timothy McBride from Tabernacle Appraised Church International.
Amen. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Father, we come before you now, first of all thanking you and praising you for this time, this opportunity that you've allowed us to come together as a community, as a, just as a wonderful, wonderful Henry County. Thank you for allowing us to see another year that we are in 2017, and so we give you praise for that. We just ask that you would continue to allow unity to reign in this county, that we will continue to express and practice being that one nation under God. We ask that you would help us this year to reason together, to get along together, to listen to each other, and not just listen to respond, but listen to understand, so that we can get things accomplished this year. We thank you, Lord God, for our new officials that are standing before us this year, and we ask that your presence will be upon them. I pray that they will govern with integrity, pray that they will govern with responsibility. I thank you, Lord God, that this group of people standing before us today, Lord God, that they will cater to the needs of all the people and not just some of the people. We pray, Lord God, that you would allow us, Lord God, this year to continue to look out for those that don't have voices, look out for those that are poor and needy, those who are left out. We pray, Lord God, that we will have a heart for those people this year. We also pray, Lord God, that you would bless every governmental agency, bless every city, bless the city of Hampton, bless the city of Stockbridge, bless the city of McDonough, bless the city of Locust Grove. We ask that you would bless our police departments, our fire departments. Lord God, we ask that you would bless our nonprofit organizations, bless our first responders, bless all of our churches and our businesses. Most of all, bless all the citizens of Henry County, because your word declares that when the right people are in charge, the city will rejoice. So on this day, we rejoice because we have the right people in charge. We give you praise. Bless Henry County. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. This meeting is now called to order by the Board of Commissioners, and therefore I call for acceptance of the agenda, and I would like to note the following. First of all, there's a planning and zoning item that was advertised this meeting. It has been removed at the request of the applicant, and it will be heard at a later date, and that is public hearing COMP AM 1606. Also, we request to amend the comprehensive plan by, that was for Kevin and Alicia, that is that zoning issue. Also, under item nine, 19, under county manager budget will be a discussion item only, so there will be no vote. So I ask of the board, are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, I call for a motion to accept the agenda as stated.
So moved.
Got a motion by District Two.
Second.
Got a second by District Four. Any comments or discussion? All in favor, please raise by raising your hand. We now will move to the recognition of our recertification for the state of Georgia law by Chief Callaway of Georgia of the Associations of Police Chiefs.
It gives me great pleasure to represent the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police this morning. My name is James Callaway. I'm the chief of police at City of Morrow. I'm also the District Ten representative for the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police, and as well have experience with the state certification program. There's only 121 law enforcement agencies in the state of Georgia out of 700 that have achieved this noteworthy accomplishment. This means that the Henry County Police Department is among the best of the best in the state of Georgia. They have sound practices, sound policies, and they are hereby recognized as a state certified agency.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. (APPLAUSE). Also, the business of actually becoming state certified, you have to have somebody to do the work. You have to have somebody that pours over the policies, that gets things in line, that gets the officers to do, you know, exactly what they're supposed to do, get with the chief of police. And we also would like to recognize Officer Joe Hensley for his work as a state certification manager. Again, thank you so much. Everybody have a happy new year on behalf of the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank you, Chief Callaway. We'll take a picture here, but we do want to commend our Henry County Police Department and also our chief, Mr. Hensley. Thank you again for, we're very proud of our public safety here in Henry County. So thank you very much.
I just want to thank our officers, the men and women that work for our department, because without their hard work, their dedication, and their loyalty to the department and the county, none of this would have been possible. So thank you for the officers. Thanks.
Chief, amen. Very good. Hold up, please. Do you want to take a photo? Appointments. We will be making appointments to the Henry County Development Authority, Henry County Recreation Board, and so the others that we will list as we go. So regarding our Henry County Development Authority, we will be appointing Jeffrey Cobble, District One, as a reappointment, District Two, David Linton, Charles Mobley for District Three as a reappointment, and David Gill for District Four, filling an unexpired term. For appointments to the Henry County Recreation Board, we have District One, John Dewberry Jr., District Two, Wayne Swanson, District Three as a reappointment, David Wilkerson. Appointments to the Henry County Library Board, we have Sharon Ponder as an appointment by the chair, District One is Kathy Gardner, District Three is Sandy McGarrity as a reappointment. For appointments to the Henry County Zoning Advisory Board, we have Pete Darius Pete Peterson as appointed by the chair, District One, Rick Freddwell, District Two, Simeon Nunnely, District Three, Jim Risher as a reappointment, District Four, Vicky Consiglio as a reappointment, District Five, Delander Nelson. Appointments to the Henry County Water Authority, District One, Warren Holder, District Two, Rosalyn Williams, District Three, Jimmy Carter, District Four, Harold Jenkins, District Five, Carlotta Harold, and Mr. Carter, Mr. Jenkins, and Ms. Harrell are all reappointments. Appointments to the Hospital Authority, District One's submittal was Ms. Peggy Carter, District Two's submittal is John Carl Camp. Appointments to the Family and Children Services, we have Reverend Dr. Terrence Gaddis and also Pastor Spencer T. O'Neil. For appointments to the Henry Council on Agent, District One, Susan Craig as a reappointment, District One is Paul Houghton, we have Yvonne Abraham as District Two, Esma Oliver, District Two, and for District Three, Mr. Charlie Tomlinson as a reappointment. Appointing to the Connecting Henry Board, we have District Two, Mr. William Talmadge. And so at this point in time, we would like to open the floor for a motion to approve the board appointments that have been stated.
So moved.
We've got a motion by District Four.
Second.
Got a second by District Three. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. The appointments have been approved. We now will move to the Appointment of Vice Chair as item eight. And each year, the board traditionally appoints a vice chair to act in the absence of the chair. This year's District Four's turn, so I will ask for a motion to appointing District Four Commissioner Blake Prince as vice chair. And again, the resolution has been amended to call for a one-year term, not a two-year term, as indicated in the resolution provided to you in advance. I now call for a motion for the Appointment of Vice Chair of Board.
So moved.
Got a motion by?
Second.
In the second. All in favor? Thank you. Welcome, sir. We will now move to the Appointment of County Clerk and Deputy Clerk. Each year, the Board of Commissioners reappoints the clerk and deputy clerk. I will ask for a motion of appointing Stephanie Braun as County Clerk and Consuela Connor as Deputy County Clerk.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, signify. Thank you.
Madam Chair, before you move on to the consent agenda, we had our first skip on the agenda. If you'd go back to item six, public safety immediately prior to the board appointments, we need to accept some gun safes from Home Depot.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Okay, we will go back to item six, that was inadvertently omitted, and to restate it. Item six on public safety, we are authorizing a resolution for the acceptance of two gun safes from Home Depot to be used by the Henry County Police Department, and we're asking Major Golling to present that. So thank you, and I apologize, Major.
No problem. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. The resolution before you is authorizing the acceptance of two gun safes from Home Depot, and here this morning to authorize that and as well, wanted to share a photograph with you, is Mr. Mike Muehlbauer from Home Depot as well. Would you like to say anything, Mr. Muehlbauer?
I'm good. Glad you guys can have a use for him.
And we're requesting the acceptance of the safes to be utilized at the police department to secure weapons along with ammunition.
Okay. Well, thank you. We've heard the presentation, and now we're open the floor for a motion to accept.
Move to approve.
We got a motion by District Four.
Second.
Second by District Five. Any comments or discussions? All in favor? Thank you, and we appreciate that. Thank you as well from Home Depot and all that they do for our public safety as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you mind if we get a photograph with you?
Sure. Now we will move to the consent agenda. And as you all have received this, the following items shall be considered on the consent agenda. There are 10 items listed on the consent agenda, and then this was also on the published agenda, and if there are any items on the agenda that the commissioners wish to remove, please let me know. Okay, the 10 consent items, we've got three that are related to public safety regarding donations. Two of those came from Tanger Outlet, $500 to the police department, $500 to the fire department, and a thousand as well to the fire department from Walmart. And then we, of course, have the memorandum of understanding regarding the certification process for the Henry County misdemeanor DUI and drug court as a consent item. And then, of course, we've got two resolutions regarding like districts in District One, one on caselanding subdivision, the other one in the Sandy Ridge subdivision. And then we've got two transit resolutions, one to apply for 2018 Georgia Department of Transportation Operation and Capital Assessment for Henry County Transit, and we also have a consent to accept additional funding for transportation services to the elderly and disabled through the Georgia Department of Human Services. Also, in that listing of 10, we have one technical services resolution to dispose of surplus items and equipment, and then we've got a SPOS item that authorizes the chair to exact local maintenance improvements grants for Old Highway Three and State Route 81. So we've read through those items. We now call for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion? A second?
Second.
Got a second by District Four. Any comments? Discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you very much. So this ends our consent agenda, and at this time now, we will move into our planning and zoning items. And I'll see that Mr. Gibbs is already there before, so as previously announced, the request related to 58 Old Stage Coat Road has been removed by the applicant, and it will be advertised and posted before it is presented to the next board again, and that was in District Five. So we'll now move on to public hearing regarding the Race Track Petroleum Corporation. So again, I ask Mr. Dante to come, and I would like to make a disclosure regarding this particular item. During my campaign for chair of the Henry County Board of Commissioners, there were several individuals that supported my campaign through four elections. Of course, one of the ones who are a greater supporter is Mr. Andy Welch of the Law Forum of Smith, Welch, Webb, and White. And so throughout this campaign, Mr. Welch made significant, again, contributions and support to me, and I will, again, just wanted to disclose this, as he has also made the disclosure. I have discussed this with counsel, and we have concluded that this fact does not require me to recuse myself, but I will continue to chair the meeting during this item and following the rezoning items, but I will cast a vote only in the event of a tie, and this will be my standard practice during all zoning matters. So at this time, Mr. Dante, you may proceed.
Thank you, Commission Chair and Commissioners. Good morning. The applicant is requesting to amend the future land use designation of the subject property from medium-high density residential to commercial. The properties of budding Jodico Road near the subject property all have a current future land use designation of commercial, and the developing character of the area is supported by our comprehensive plan's definition of a commercial service, and the subject property is located in what our comprehensive plan further defines as appropriate transportation corridors and intersections to easily serve the public. Jodico Road is a major arterial road and is appropriate, and is an appropriate corridor for commercial uses. Based on the current zoning trends of the area and the predominant commercial character of planning and zoning, I has no objection to the applicant's request to amend the future land use map designation for the subject properties from medium-high density residential to commercial. And with that said, on November 10, 2016, planning and zoning staff recommended approval of the applicant's request to the zoning advisory board, and the zoning advisory board recommends to the Board of Commissioners approval of the applicant's request.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gibbs. I now ask for the applicant to come forward, please.
Good morning, Brian Strickland. Here on behalf of the applicant. And we just ask that you follow the recommendations on the advisory board. Again, this just deals with a couple, the rear lots total 0.63 acres on the amendment to the comprehensive land use plan. Happy to take any questions.
Well, this is a public hearing on comps AM 1607. Persons wishing to be heard in opposition to the request will have a total of 10 minutes to present their opposition, and those in favor will likewise have 10 minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition, and if so, please come forward now? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this zoning request, will you please come forward Okay, this public hearing is concluded. So now call for a motion.
Chairman, I'm going to move to approve to change the complement. Please.
Okay, we got a motion from District Four.
Second.
We got a second by District Three. Any comments or discussions further? At this time, we ask for a vote to approve this resolution. All in favor, raise your... Oops, I got to wart me out. I just stated that I will not vote, so thank you. Okay. At this time, we do have another acknowledgement by Mr. Gibbs.
Thank you, Commission Chair, Commissioned Chair and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to rezone the same subject property as the previous case located northeast of the intersection of Jodico Road and Patrick Henry Parkway to C3, and that this will enable them to use the subject property as a gas station, and the future land use map now designates the subject property as commercial, which supports the applicant's request. A small portion of the subject property along Patrick Henry Parkway exists within the LCI, which is our livable centers initiative where that study boundary encompassed, which was commissioned to make communities more livable, walkable, accessible, and pedestrian and bicycle friendly. And the LCI study was adopted by the BOC on July 6, 2010, and the comprehensive plan was amended to implement the LCI by the BOC on October 21, 2014. All of the subject properties will be combined into one parcel within 12 months, and P&amp;Z staff recommended approval to the ZAB on November 10, 2016 of the applicant's rezoning request with conditions that reflect the intentions of the LCI that will be applicable to the entire subject property. The zoning advisory board recommended approval, recommends approval to the BOC of the applicant's request with the following conditions that I'm going to place on the overhead for public I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Call for questions to the applicant to approach again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, Brian Strickland here on behalf of the applicant, and we just want to thank the work of the zoning advisory board and also Commissioner Prince for your work on this, and we would like for you to follow the recommendation with these eight conditions for the rezoning. Happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Chairman, I'll hold my questions till after the hearing.
Okay. Well, very good. Okay, this is a public hearing on RZ 1626. Persons wishing to be heard in opposition to this request will have a total of 10 minutes to present their opposition. Those in favor will likewise have 10 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, would you please come forward at this time? Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward at this time. This public hearing is now concluded. Now call for a motion. I mean, go ahead.
Questions for the applicant?
Okay. Please approach the board again.
Let's talk about this. Dante, will you put the site plan back up, please? I'm kind of curious on the site plan here. Your northern property is residential, and if we rezone this commercial, I don't see the 40-foot required buffer between the residential and the commercial on here. Is that... What are we doing with that? Do you know?
On the back portion, northern portion of the property?
The northern portion, yes.
And northern portion's not been developed yet. It's actually owned by the same property owner.
Okay.
And so it has not been developed yet, the northern portion.
Okay. The other question, Dante, do you have a copy of the ALTA survey?
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
Survey?
Sure.
I just want to point this out as a point of interest. The northwest corner of this parcel of the, actually, the parcel that's not being rezoned, and it's shown as track number seven on here, and I don't think you can read it on our... Can we get this in focus? Per chance?
This portion, right here?
Yep, that's the one. I just want to make sure that we're clear. I'm not sure what the area is going to be of that lot once it's subdivided. It's zoned R3, if I'm not mistaken? Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. If this falls below the area of R3, then it will be a non-conforming lot, so we may have to come back and clean that up here in a little bit. So something we need to look at. All right, please excuse me, I'm going through some computer trouble, so let me get down to the conditions. I'm going to make some changes on these conditions. Just give me a minute, please. I'm still looking. Hold up. Do you have a book? Okay. Let's start with the conditions. Make sure I'm on the right page here. Condition number two, the existing deceleration lane along Jodico Road is to be lengthened to Henry County DOT requirements in order to provide deceleration lane for access to the site. We need to add a caveat in there that this needs to be done inside of the DOT right away. We do this often when we're designing a lot, where we try to make citizens put decel lanes on other people's properties, and it ends projects very quickly. So somewhere in there, the existing deceleration lane along Jodico Road is to be lengthened within Henry County DOT right-of-way and to meet DOT requirements. Good?
Yes.
All right. Number three, access onto Patrick Henry Parkway shall be such that it meets intersection site distance requirement. The access onto Patrick Henry Parkway is to be restricted access that prevents left turnouts of the site onto Patrick Henry Parkway. Somewhere in there, I would like to add a raised... Somewhere in there, I would like to add a raised island. What happens when we just paint these? People end up just driving over the paint, taking a left. That's a pretty hairy intersection right there. There's a curve. And we need to make sure people aren't taking a left. So Dante, somewhere in here, we need to add... Let's see, should be meets the site distance requirement access on Patrick Henry is to be restricted. Restricted using a right-in, right-out only turn lane with raised island. All right, you got that? Number four, we're just going to change some verbiage there. The subject properties are to be combined by replat within 12 months. That should be the subject properties are to be combined and replatted within 12 months.
Could you say it again, Commissioner Prince?
Yes, the subject properties are to be combined and replatted. That is a word, within 12 months. And number 10. Blank windowless walls are prohibited. All facade facing a public right of way shall have windows openings that are between 15 to 60% of the total facade area. The glass shall be clear, unpainted, and not tinted such that views into the buildings are obstructed. First, let's talk about this. I'd like to strike blank windowless walls are prohibited. In design of a C-store, you have your coolers along the back wall. You can't put windows along a back wall. And then, I have a question as to the reasoning behind the glass shall be clear, unpainted, and not tinted such that the views into the building are not obstructed. Why is this in here?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Who added the clear and unpainted, non-tinted windows? Is that part of the LCI?
From the LCI.
Okay. All right, that's part of the LCI. I'm going to leave that in there. And that's all the changes I have to the conditions. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning for the subject property.
Mr. Prince, is your motion something to the 11 conditions as modified that were in the resolution or the eight conditions? Did you display eight?
They are 11.
There are 11?
Yeah, three were missing from the overhead. I apologize.
My motion, yeah, I was kind of curious about that. My motion is to approve the rezoning with the 11 conditions amended.
Okay, we've got a motion for the 11 conditions to be amended. Got it seconded by District Five. Any comments or questions from the board regarding this? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. We'll now move on to item D in our public hearing regarding RZ 1624. This is in District Two. So again, Mr. Dante Gibbs, you will proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair and Commissioners. Excuse me. The applicant is requesting to rezone 16.2 acres from R3 to R2 for the purpose of developing single-family homes on individual septic systems. The subject property was rezoned from RA to R2 in 2005 and assigned a zoning of R3 based upon the conversion chart in Section 1-11-00A in our ULDC, following the adoption of the ULDC in 2009. At the time of the rezoning in 2005, the R2 zoning designation permitted the development of the subject property with individual septic systems. However, documentation provided by the Henry County Water Authority at the time indicated that county sewer facilities were not available to serve the site. With the adoption of the ULDC in 2009 and the conversion to R3 zoning designation, the property became non-conforming and now requires rezoning to be developed as proposed. The applicant proposes to divide the subject property or parcels into five lots. R2 zoning would permit the development of four new single-family homes on individual septic systems. Each new lot would be a minimum of 30,000 square feet in area, having a minimum heated floor area of 1,600 square feet and would have frontage along Locust Road. There will be a flag lot created to permit ingress and egress to the existing home. Staff recommended approval of the applicant's request to the zoning advisory board on November 10th, 2016 with six conditions. And the zoning advisory board recommends to the Board of Commissioners approval of the applicant's request with the six staff recommended conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Well, thank you. And we need... This is in District One, I do need to make that note. We do ask for the applicant to approach if they're here.
Good morning, staff, and happy new year. Basically, pretty much, we just wanted, as he said, rezone our property because we're going to build for right now just one house on one of the lots that we are separating. And but we can't start building process right now because of the fact that our zone is incorrect right now. But that's because of the fact that when we were building the original house that's on it right now, they wouldn't provide sewer services. So we had to get a septic tank. And pretty much the only problem is just it's the incorrect zone. And in order to continue building, we got to rezone the whole lot, pretty much, the whole property. And we just ask for you to... For your approval to rezone. And we are... We will meet all the expectations of the six listed, I believe? Yeah, six.
Thank you. Well, this is a public hearing on RZ 1624. Persons wishing to be heard in opposition of this request will have a total of 10 minutes to present their opposition. And those in favor will also have 10 minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this request? And if so, will you please come forward? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request? Will you please come forward now? After the public hearing is now concluded, we now call for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning from R3 to R2 from properly located at 67 Locust Road.
We got a motion by District One and a second by District Five. Any further comments or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now going to move into item seven regarding public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting, and you must complete the public comment speaker form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. And we have one public comment by Clayton Cartt, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly. And his topic is regarding T-Splost and transportation funding. Hello, Mr. Cartt.
Good morning to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, that is the proper pronunciation of my last name. Thank you. I'd like to speak... My name is Clayton Cartt. I'm a resident at 1503 South Bethany Road in Locust Grove, District One. I would like to speak to you today regarding the T-Splost and transportation project funding within Henry County. As passed in the 2015 Georgia General Assembly under House Bills 170 and 106, single counties now have the option to exercise a 1% transportation splost sales tax to generate additional revenue for transportation projects. The first county within the state of Georgia to take advantage of this was Fulton County in the recent November election, with 68% yes passing the City of Atlanta vote and 53% yes passing the remainder of the county vote. Please note that the two separate votes was a special case for Fulton County approved by the General Assembly. All other votes would be one countywide vote. Several counties within the Atlanta metro area, including Gwinnett and DeKalb, are considering this T-Splost in the year 2017, and I ask Henry County to consider the same. Within the Henry County 2040 Joint County Cities and Transportation Plan, the county has identified transportation projects with an estimated cost of $3.3 billion. However, the current estimated funding through the year 2040 is only $1.1 billion. These figures are available on pages 49 and 50 of the 2040 plan. This creates a shortfall of over $2 billion to fund much-needed transportation improvement projects. It is estimated within the 2040 plan that the enactment of a T-Splost would generate an additional $1.29 billion through the year 2040. The enactment of a T-Splost in Henry County would more than double the county's potential and available funding to complete transportation project. Combined with leveraging additional state-matched funds, we could work to even further reduce the transportation shortfall. Transportation and traffic is a major issue within Henry County. I ask the Board of Commissioners to consider the T-Splost and let the voters decide via a voter referendum how serious they are about fixing our transportation. Thank you, Board of Commissioners.
And thank you, Mr. Cartt. We've made a note, and we appreciate your comments. We will now move to our item 13. Our Mr. Swenson is requested to address the Board of Commissioners. And Mr. Swenson will be allocated 15 minutes to address the board. Hello, Mr. Swenson.
Well, good morning, Ms. Wood. Chairperson Wood, I don't know how you prefer to be addressed, but it's good to see somebody new up there and two new faces, Mr. Wilson. Glad to have you here. First thing that comes to mind, and I've got a few things to talk about here, is the people of Georgia in the region soundly defeated something called T-Splost about, what, four years ago? They did so because this is another way of having a private-public partnership of which unfortunately, Ms. Wood, you are automatically a part of, and that is the Atlanta Regional Authority. Okay? Nobody voted for that authority to be... Or that commission to be established. That was foisted upon us by the federal government through our state agencies. But that's an extra penny sales tax. And the benefit, what is the benefit? The benefit is not to us. Because what you see is the same thing with the toll lanes now going up on I-75. It's going to generate revenue. Sure it is. What's the benefit to Henry County? Very little, actually. Very little. All the money is going to the Atlanta Regional Commission. Of this, you know. Why are we funding a private-public partnership with, in effect, tax dollars? And that's what that is, is tax dollars. When we have no reason for that. We have a budget in the state. We have a budget in the county for our transportation needs. And if you look at the bottom line for this regional commission, you're going to find that their bottom line is really, really expanding. They're getting bigger all the time. They're getting so big, in fact, that they're going to dwarf the individual counties that they supposedly represent. Now, remember, when this was set up, it was set up with more private appointments to that board than the people that they were bringing in from the counties, meaning I think it was one mayor from the county and the commission chairperson. You're outvoted by the personal... The personal people that are appointed to this. So in fact, the people have no voice. And that's why I'm... That's what I'm here to talk about today. The areas where we don't have a voice. And it doesn't stop there. Ms. Wood, I don't know if you're aware of this, or I know the rest of you are. Mr. Wilson, as soon as you took your oath, you, Ms. Wood, became the CEO of three different corporations that I'm aware of. You are now the CEO of the Henry County Governmental Finance Corporation. You are the CEO of Henry First. And you are the CEO of Henry County Office Industrial Corporation. Now, they all have their purposes. But as the former commission chairman stated, those purposes are so that you, as commissioners, can do what you can't do as elected. Now, I've brought this up many times before, and I will continue to bring it up because I think it's that important. You're going to get advice from your esteemed counsel, the same counsel that was let go a few years ago because of incompetence, but they're going to tell you that it's all okay. You can do this. Ms. Wood, Mr. Wilson, are you even aware that this is what you've been dragged into? Are you aware of all the various positions that we did not elect you to, but you're now a part of? How are you to represent us? How are you to represent us in deals that you're not supposed to be involved in? There's one out there that's... It's amazing. It truly is amazing. It's right in back of you here. The golf course. What business does the county have running a golf course? None, of course. They have no business running any business. You're there to serve the people. And as servants of the people, you're there to do it lawfully, within the constitutional constraints that limit you in what you can and cannot do. Extended contracts are not part of your purview. That's where you get into that muddy water that forces the attorneys out there to do a little juggling with words. But we didn't hire you. We didn't elect you for that. We elected you to represent us. You are the fiduciaries of our trust. And we trust that you are going to do the right thing. We have these properties here over... Well, this property here in back of us that to do the right thing would mean, for you, Ms. Wood, for you, Mr. Wilson, and for the rest of you on the commission, you should be working with the school board. Because they've been looking for property here lately, you know what I mean? And we've got the property. They're never going to do what they planned on doing, and that was under the... That was under the leadership of BJ Mathis. You see, they wanted to make that whole thing an industrial park. Okay. They had no business getting involved in that, but they wanted to make it an industrial park. And, you know, kind of fell through. But the corporation survived. It's still there and still doing business. Although I cannot find a lot of references to the business that it is doing. So if you can't find references through open records as to what they are actually doing, why are they in existence? There's nothing in any of these corporations that we're talking about that mean they have to exist. And the people have trust in the people that they elect. You're fresh faces. Two fresh faces, actually three. One not here. And we trust that you're going to be the new keepers of the gate. The gate to the coffers of Henry County. Henry County does not want to be overtaxed. Henry County does not want to be like Clayton County, who is now sitting at 8%. Not because of T-Splost either. Because of inefficiency and fiduciary responsibility. We need not go there. And the people of this county, who are part of oversight, are going to do our part to try and preclude that from happening. We want to help you. We do. We want to help you to do the job that you need to do. But you need to reach out to us because... But you need to reach out to us, because there's not a lot of communication going on between those that have uncovered these problems and yourselves. But I'm going to ask you, since this is the start of a brand-new term for you and a brand-new term for the commission, that we get down to business and get rid of some of this waste and abuse, financial abuse, financial abuse of the citizens of this county. There's a lot of things you can do that are within your powers to do so, and there are a few things that aren't. Now, I want to ask each and every one of you to think about this. I don't expect a response, but the Henry County Governmental Finance Corporation seems to be a great big mystery. Nobody can tell me what exactly they do, but they can tell me that they can't get rid of it. Now, why would that be? Why would that be? You're going to be asked to re-up it here, what, by April? I think that's when the corporation has to be resigned with the Secretary of State. Yeah, you'll be asked to do that. And you're all part of it now, and you'll be part of it again. The past commission, last term, went so far as to, as to finally appoint a board for Henry First, which is a nonprofit. And by the way, all of these nonprofits, folks, somebody's making profit, I don't know who, but it is the people. It all goes under this glorious heading of doing something good for the people, and when they're, when they're not, they're not. The best-laid plans can go to you-know-what-in-a-handbasket, and generally, that's the way this goes. But Henry First, in particular, even though you have established a board for them, I don't know if it carries over into your term, but even though you've done that, you're all still on it. You're still the CEO, and the rest of you are still board members. And this flies in the face of your oath, because you can only do certain things as elected representatives. Can we agree to operate within that realm? Because you've got a lot, you've got a lot of space in there to operate. You really do. But let's get rid of the things that are set there to take advantage of the people. Henry County Governmental Finance Corporation, Henry County Office Industrial Park Corporation, and Henry First. We can get rid of those, and we can get rid of this boondoggle back here. One of the ways we can do the golf course, really, work with the school board. They need property right now. Of course, they want to go out and buy more property. That makes no sense in the world. How many more properties do you want to take off of the tax rolls so that they can go where they want? How about they go where we want? We've got the property. Let's use it. Use it for something it was intended for, for the will of the people, the good of the That's what I'm here to talk about today. And T-Sploß, again, it was soundly defeated by the people. But just like herpes, it's coming back. And it will continue to come back. It will continue to haunt us, because bureaucracy expands. If it doesn't, it kind of like dies, and that's what they're afraid of. And the T-Sploß Regional Authority is an expansion of authority that has never, ever been agreed to by the people. The legislators, the governor, have foisted this upon us. When are you going to stand up for us? When are you going to stand up and fight back? We don't need their incursion. We don't need the high taxes. And I darn sure don't want to see Henry County go the way of Clayton and have eight percent sales tax. Do you know how much business that is going to take from that county and bring over to counties that charge less? Less is more. We want to remember that moving forward. Less is more. Less government, less taxes. They're going to bring the people here, and they're going to bring the businesses here. So, that's where I want to close today. But again, I want to welcome you to the commission, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Wood. I'm glad to see you, and I hope we can work together moving forward to clean up some of the irregularities and fiduciary problems that we have within this county, and I'm hoping that you will do that. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Swenson. I've made a note of your comments. Thank you. Okay. We now will welcome Mr. Bill Tony, and he too will have fifteen minutes.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia. Y'all are going to be voting on a resolution in a few minutes. This is a resolution that's in place right now on public speaking and people being able to come to the board. There's a, this has been working, I think, pretty well since 2003. We've got you on board now, Ms. Wood, and your first, first meeting, you're wanting to do the changing of the public speaking. I value my First Amendment right. As many, as much taxes as I pay in this county, I have a right to get up here and speak. Now, I don't, I'm not here to attack anybody. I'm not here for anything like that. All I'm saying is, we've had enough back-room deals going on, and we're, and this is, you know, we've been, I've been coming up before this board now for four years. Before I started coming up to this board, back-room deals was just like this. This is just six pieces of property that we've bought that we have no need for. We have wasted over $52 million. Every piece of property that's on there, we paid, either paid too much for it, or the value of it is, when we bought it, went to zero. In the last four years, I can't tell you any property that we bought that we've done such goofy stuff with as we did with this stuff. Now, this is my job, and is, as a citizen, to bring this stuff before people so they can see what's going on. I don't, I don't have a vote on that board, but I do have, I do have the privilege of coming before you, or have had the privilege of coming before you and, and speaking about what I think's wrong in the county. When I have a grievance, it's my constitutional right to come before this board. The First Amendment is one, is the First Amendment for a reason. Now, I tell you what, and I got to thinking, I put a lot of thought into this, and I didn't, I didn't vote for you, and you pretty well know I didn't vote for you, Ms. Wood, because I knew that things like this would probably be coming about. And, and sure enough, first meeting, you already want to change, want to change it around and stop people from getting up here and speaking. That's not right. That's not fair. You know, the great Martin Luther King, and I say it with the utmost respect, without the First Amendment, he'd been dead in his tracks. I feel like that, you know, if you can look at that flag and honor the, the Constitution of the United States as a citizen, as a soldier, as, you know, as a citizen of this country and with the military we have, if you can look at that and start taking apart our freedom of information, I mean, our right to speak, our First Amendment right, that's not right. I'm telling you, it's not right. When I see things like the Water Authority, the general manager over there making $289,000 a year, and I've got police officers here that's doing $18.50 an hour and $19 and $20 an hour that's taking their life in their own hands every day. I have a right to speak about that, ma'am. I really have a right to speak about that. When y'all come to vote in a few minutes on changing this resolution and doing away with this one, I want you to stop a minute, look at that flag, just look at it and figure out if your hand wants to go up or not. I certainly hope that, that y'all don't go the coward's way out. I hope you don't do it. I hope you vote no. Leave it just like it is. It's, it's, it gives everybody an opportunity to come up here and talk to you and, and not be limited to three minutes or whatever. That's what I saw, I think, on the thing was three minutes. But I'm asking y'all to vote no. Mr. Holmes, I'm asking you to vote no. Mr. Wilson, I'm asking you to vote no. Mr. Barham, I'm asking you to vote no. Mr. Prince, I'm asking you to vote no. And I'm asking you to just do away with it. Do the right thing, Ms. Wood. Let's, let's don't, you know, it's, it's not going to make these, all these people go away. It's not going to make them go away. You know, we've got social media, we've got, you know, we're not going away. We're going to, we're, we're done with back-room deals. We're not going to have any more back-room deals. Be open and transparent. Let the people get up here and speak. Do the right thing. Ms. Woods, I'm, I'm asking you for a no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. We now will invite up Mr. Larry Maury to also speak for fifteen minutes.
My name is Larry Maury with Ethics in Government. One thing I'd like to thank Mr. Jason Harper for putting cameras, I believe I'm right, for putting cameras in here so we can see people speak and have the opportunity. And I think during Mr. Maddox's chairmanship, we had the ordinance that we've been speaking under, where we had fifteen minutes to speak. I'd like to thank him for that. And I don't know if Tommy Smith is here or not, but I don't know if people in Henry County should know it. Tommy was very instrumental, along with some people, friends of mine in South Georgia, that stopped the extra loads that the transportation, we're going to let trucks have in Georgia, letting them have double trailers, bigger trailers, bigger loads to haul. They already tearing the roads all to pieces, and, and Tommy was very instrumental in stopping that. He was one of the more vocal opponents, and he should, he should be given credit for that, along with some of our friends in South Georgia. Another thing that I think very, feel very strong about, electricity is probably the biggest moneymaker in state government. Hampton over here has been very blessed with having southern states. I think y'all even praised them for having their own electrical, and if you'll notice, Hampton's got a nice little cushion in their account, bank account. And I had spoke to several of our leaders of our county, why don't we go countywide? Do a deal with Hampton and us make our utility, a county utility, with cities' participation? Money revenue, all your LED lights now are, are changing the scope of electricity in America. Solar, wind, and hydrogen is right around the corner. All of six major car manufacturers now have rolled out cars on nothing but hydrogen. Electricity's fixing to change. It's a great generator of revenue. I recommend that our cities and our county partner with Hampton and, and make it a countywide utility and quit paying these exorbitant rates. Georgia Power's fixing to buy, controlling interest in Atlanta gas and light. If you want to see a boondoggle, look at your gas bill. They fee you to death. And we're headed that same way in, in our utilities with these mammoth companies. That's number three. Number four, this gentleman come back from Atlanta says we need to raise more taxes. Lord have mercy. Henry County, sir, oh, yeah, the state voted down that one percent sales tax, and now we're bringing it back up. We, our, we call them the gold on, our legislators. Henry County's only got 15 to 17 percent of what we were supposed to get the last five years in revenue for transportation. All other metro counties in the Atlanta region has got over 70 percent. I just want to know where the rest of our money is at and who's got it. Surely, we, we're one of the metro counties. Why didn't we get our share? I've heard that it was Tommy's fault. I don't believe one person's at fault. I believe, I believe our representatives and our legislators should be responsible enough to bring that money back to Henry, whether one of you commissioners like it or not. Us represent Henry County, not personal feudal kingdoms. The next thing I'm going to put on the little screen here, you know, I pay attention to transportation because it's kind of a pet peeve of mine. If you'll notice in that upper right-hand corner and the lower corner, I thought it was kind of unique that Home Depot built a, one building on 155. They've now built two. And I noticed where the state gave Lounes County $30, uh, $30 million to widen the roads where Home Depot went on in their county. But we down yonder on a two-lane, and ain't nothing been done. And I told y'all before, and I don't think none of you's been there because you haven't commented, I go over on 20 to Thompson, Georgia, and they built two interchanges over there on 20 with no growth, and here we are, just being covered up, and we get nothing. And the last thing I want to point out is did y'all see that where the money will finance 11 major projects? But here's one of the main projects. They're going to build truck lanes from Macon to Henry County. Now, I don't know if, if y'all know it or not, but I think the public has a good idea. We got now somewhere between 3,000 and 5,000 trucks with what warehouses we got under, that's built under construction or planned, that will be coming into this county, 3,000 to 5,000. You can't, you already can't get home because of trucks, and now we're just headed down that, continuing down that same pattern. If we don't address it, after a while, we can't get home. We can't get home because of trucks. And the, this is one of the last things I want to talk about, something very dear to me. You know, I've been coming up here for quite a while, and I've never heard over about an hour at the most, the most, you know, most speaking of, of public citizens, hour at the most. That gives y'all seven hours to do your business and an hour for the public to speak, and now you wanting to take that away. I've been said, I've been told this morning that, well, we're going to offer to give you five minutes instead of 15 minutes. But if you, if you don't like that, we can give you three minutes. Well, why can't you just leave it at 15 minutes? If I respect you and don't call you bad names and don't holler and scream at you, why can't you give me 15 minutes? why can't you give me 15 minutes? You know, you're acting in government like it is a bully in the playground. If the bully's in the playground, just counsel school, rather than address the bully in the playground. We always go, in government, we go backwards instead of trying to work with each other. These men that we all talk and come to speak, we've all talked about being respectful, being courteous, being, you know, but yet, we continue to try to limit what citizens can do. I think that you need to look at intergovernmental chains of way to save money, rather than to limit people being able to speak. And this is my last thing. We've had five county managers in four years. Five in four years. And I think Mr. Bonner, and I've worked with him, and doggone it, he ain't been pretty decent. You know, I told him to his face, he's been decent. But don't, the problem, he ain't gonna be him in the future, and he's only been here a few months. So I got a, I got a proposal. Chairman can't vote. Why don't we just combine the chairman and the county manager's position into one, and we'll, we'll let the chairman be the county manager and chairman? And we'll save $75,000 a year, then we can hire three more policemen. I think that'll do more good than, because we've had five managers in four years, something ain't working, something ain't going right. So, you know, and last, there's a young black girl that's one of the hottest voices in singing today, Ms. Keys. You know, if you go to her, her, where she puts on her program app, you know, first thing she tells you to do? Shut off your telephone, your email. If you're gonna listen to my singing, listen to my singing. If you ain't, get up and get out. Mr. Gates, Mr. Cook, and all those people that made all these devices will not allow their children over one hour a day to play with those gadgets they invented. I think it would be good for you gentlemen and ladies to put aside those other devices and pay attention to what people are saying, and we may be able to work better together. You can't, you cannot do two things at one time and give one thing justice. You might learn enough to cut some taxes and cut some costs in this county, rather than limiting our opportunity to speak. Now, I'm gonna make this, and this is not a threat, this is a fact. If you vote to take away our right to speak, I promise you, it will not be the last of it. It will come back to visit you again. First of all, I think you're totally illegal in doing it. That's number one. Number two, you will face opposition if you do that. Not a threat, it's a fact. Because every day on social media, we're gonna put your name and face and your hand that you've limited people in government. And next time you run for office, June, you just spent over $100,000 winning. You gonna spend a lot more than that next time, if you vote against this, and you better remember that. Thank y'all, have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Maury, for your comments. Notes were made. We will now move on to the next item on our agenda regarding public safety, item 16, from our Henry County Fire Department. So we ask Chief Johnson for the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This morning, I'm asking, excuse me, this morning, I'm asking approval for a resolution for new hydraulic equipment for our rescue truck for here at Station 1. It's a two-phased project, this year Station 1, next year Station 11. The execution equipment there was bought in 2006, so it's 11 years old now, and actually out of date. So it is budgeted request through operational account of the fiscal year 17 budget, through $64,797.14 to Georgia Fire Rescue of Georgia. Any questions?
All right. Are there any questions for Deputy Chief Johnson?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The equipment we're buying is gonna replace some old equipment?
It is gonna replace some old equipment. The equipment on Squad 1 now is for our heavy rescue. It'll be allocated out somewhere else that's less used. We have some equipment on some of our older engines that are 20-plus years old, that no longer are repairable or serviceable. So trying to get the stuff that's used every day on Squad 1 replaced and outsourced to a slower unit.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions from the board? Now call for a motion.
Motion.
Got a motion by District 1.
Second.
And then a second by District 5. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Chief Johnson.
Thank you.
We will now move into item 17, regarding an amendment to the resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners adopting the FSLA classifications and overtime compensation rules and authorizations, and to conduct a classification composition analysis. Welcome, Ms. Patterson.
Good morning, Chair Wood, Commissioners. Item 17 is an amendment to Resolution 16322, which adopted the 2016 classification and overtime compensation rules. This rule is now under judicial review, and so what we're asking in this amendment is to replace the stated dollar amount in the previous resolution that was passed, to change the words from a stated dollar amount to minimum salary threshold, and that way we can remain consistent with future Department of Labor, that's the U.S. Department of Labor, updates. We don't have to change the amendment every time they make a change in the dollar amount. The rest of the amendment remains the same. So I ask that you approve the amendment as presented.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Ms. Patterson? Okay. The floor is now open for a motion. Got a motion by District 5.
Second.
Got a second by District 4. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Patterson.
Thank you.
We will now move into item 18, for SPOS, and we invite Mr. Rocky Romero up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Woods and Board of Commissioners. Hemp Hill, Hemp Hill Road at Stairway 138 is an approved District 4, SPOS 4 intersection improvement project. Seal bids were solicited through the Purchasing Department for the construction of Hemp Hill Road at 138, bid number 17-27. Seven seal bids were received and reviewed. The lowest bid is $1,350,865.60 from Pitman Construction Company. Staff recommends approval of the award of the bid number 17-27 for the construction of this intersection improvement to Pitman Construction for the amount stated. This resolution also authorized the county manager or his designated to approve changes less than $50,000.
Are there any questions regarding this?
Rocky, thanks for coming in, appreciate you. How long have we been working on this, Rocky?
We've probably been working on this about 10 years, Commissioner. It started as a signal intersection, and then it was changed by GDOT request to a roundabout. So it is gonna be a roundabout, it's not gonna be the same as the one just north of it.
Yeah.
It's gonna be much bigger, and it's gonna be lighted, and so we're looking around maybe about a year or so of construction on this.
All right, let me give the background on this to the citizens a little bit. There was a lot of complaints about the North Mosley and 138 intersection, and DOT, GDOT, came in and did a mini roundabout there, and had a lot of complaints about the mini roundabout, and I understand, but again, that's GDOT. We're doing this roundabout at the next intersection down at Hemp Hill. This roundabout will be your full-blown roundabout. It will not be a mini roundabout, this is one we've spent many, many years. And we'll be working with DOT again on what we're gonna do at North Mosley and Mosley. But, you know, it's gonna inconvenience traffic for a little bit, but that intersection right there is very, very dangerous. You've got a curve, you've got some elevation changes, some areas that, I know a couple of wrecks that I've had there recently. So we're moving forward. It's a slow move, but I'm glad to see this come, finally come to fruition, and get this under control and get this taken care of. So we've got about a year and a half on construction. Do you know, are they gonna reroute traffic? Are they just gonna do what we're gonna do?
It's probably gonna be, we're definitely gonna be closing Hemp Hill on the east side during construction, but of course, we'll advertise that, and we'll have message boards and all that. But mainly 138, I don't think we'll have any lane closures. We probably have lane closures, but not a complete closure at this time that I'm aware of. Just for the citizens, you know, Stairway 20 at Eastlake, that's another roundabout project that District 4 and District 3 worked on, and we never shut down Stairway 20, and it was near a school as well and a fire station. And if you have been out there, you've seen the good progress on that one, it's just about done, so. And it's moving traffic. I went, one day I was there, right around 2:00, and never noticed the, you know, at 2:30, I was like waiting for all the traffic, and I never saw it, so it was moving, so it's working.
And I would invite the citizens, if they're not familiar with the type roundabout we're talking about, to go and see the one at 20. Because again, the one at North Mosley is a mini roundabout. That's really not a permanent solution. This is a permanent solution. So with that, I'm actually, unless any other Commissioners have a comment?
Yes. A question.
Rocky, regarding the other roundabout, the one that leads to Willland High School, are there any plans to improve that roundabout? Because it's very dangerous.
Which one's this, sir?
The other, the small one, the mini one.
The small, well, that's the one that GDOT is actually working on a full-blown design, but I think for the moment, time being, that's why they went ahead and built that little mini roundabout.
Okay.
The same thing on Stairway 1381, they did the same thing, they put a small one, but they're working on a design for a full-blown roundabout.
Got it.
All right, District 1, you had a question? Okay, District 4.
Rocky, just a comment. I've had numerous phone calls from people that are really thankful for the one at 20 and Eastlake. It's really working great, and hadn't hurt anything, but good responses out of it. Thank you.
That's good to know. Thank you.
No other further questions? We'll open the floor for a motion.
I'd like to thankfully move to approve.
Got a motion by District 4.
Second.
Got a second by District 3. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Romero.
I got one more.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The next resolution is for Lester Mill. It's an approved District 1, SPOS 4 project. Due to the construction of Lester Mill Road, it will be necessary for Henry County Water Authority to relocate a portion of its facilities. The estimated cost to relocate Henry County Water Authority facilities is $87,766.41. The water relocation estimate is 2.3% of the total construction cost. Funding for utility relocation is available in the project budget. I'll take any questions.
Okay, any questions? And this is in District 1, correct?
District 1, correct.
Okay. All right. No further questions or comments? Move, open the floor for a motion for approval.
Motion's approved.
Got a motion by District 1.
Second.
Got a second by District 4. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. We will now move to item 19. This is a discussion-only item, and we're inviting Mr. Floyd of Technology Services to amend the discussion regarding the technology service and transfer from the General Fund.
Good morning, Commission Chair. Board members, the item before you is to approve a budget transfer to Technology Services in the amount of $296,110 to allow us to replace a fiber network located in the work camp area and the demolition of the old elections building at 345 Phillips Drive. As you know, this building's been, I believe it's been condemned, and will be torn down, and will need to be torn down, but the existing network hub is located in that building, so we must move it first before we can do anything. And hopefully, the building won't come down before then, so. Any questions on this particular item? Be glad to answer.
Madam Chair, this is one of those things where we have an option to install it in a shed-like, the hub if you would, to install it in a shed-like structure, which places our entire infrastructure over there, IT infrastructure over there, in harm's way. It certainly has a vulnerability if we had done that. Our recommendation is to go ahead and replace the 17-year-old cable and put the actual hub itself in a more robustly constructed building, and that is in the Sheriff's Annex Building. Think that's a better buy. It gives us a better trunk line, and it certainly gives more distribution, and more reliable distribution to the whole Windy Hill complex.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Questions?
Yes, you had mentioned 296, but it's actually 247,890 for the fiber.
Correct. And the 48,000 was for the demolition of the building itself.
And I know we're on the contract with Comtech, but there's any other people that do this service?
I'm sure there is, but...
But they're the only ones that we got a price from?
Correct.
How was Comtech chosen?
They're on the contract.
How were they chosen? How were they chosen? I mean, how do we, how do we put them on the contract?
We've had them on the contract for several years now. They handle all our fiber, all of our low-voltage network, so.
Well, very good, and I'm glad that Mr. Gray is about to approach, since these questions are being asked. So I'll ask Mr. Gray of Purchasing to help us address the questions.
Good morning, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Mr. Gray.
The contract with Comtech was chosen through the competitive solicitation process. This contract has been in place for a while. We're currently, we currently are about to, we did an RFP for this service, there were some administrative issues with it, we had to close it out, we're about to resolicit for this very contract. We could solicit bids through a sealed bid process, if that were the direction the board wanted us to go, but due to what we determined to be the urgency of the situation, we presented costing based on the existing contract pricing we have.
Other questions?
I do have some questions.
Go ahead.
This project, I'm catching the tail end of it, so we don't, this project has been vacated for quite some time?
This building has been, yes, sir.
And for what reason?
The building is basically in very bad shape.
Is it condemned or just vacant?
Is it officially condemned yet?
That's out of my purview. I don't know.
Mr. Wilson, the initial part of this vacation of the building was done when some remediation of mold was required. The Board of County Commissioners authorized everyone to be vacated of that building, and we started cleaning it up. The history from there is, once we started cleaning it up, we started finding other things wrong with the building, where the leaks came from, how the walls were impinged, how some of the floor joists had moved around. So it's been a, over a period of time, since prior to my arrival, that caused this building to be looked at in a whole bunch of different ways, as we kept peeling back the onion, if you will. Every time we went in and did something, we found out something new that was leading us to the building or the structure itself. We've had it appraised by an architect and engineering group. We had this ability to be able to look at a design that doubled the size of it in place with a repair. After that, we found out there was some question about the loading of the floor not meeting the current building codes. I believe it was a 50-pound versus 100-pound loading. Then we found out there was some floor joists in the back of the building that hadn't been evaluated. The building has been repaired, I believe, on three occasions, and each one of the repairs have failed as we've been going along. So at this point in time, I think the last engineer's recommendation was that it was almost cost prohibitive to go back and rebuild it under the current building requirements. And so that's kind of the long history of it. We do not have a certification, I don't think there's any documentation in my records that say the building's actually been condemned.
So do we have a price for repair? Is anyone priced to repair the building?
Yes, sir, under, when we first were looking at the repair, it had to do with the Phillips Drive wall, where a nonstructural or structural wall had buckled, and we have some concrete that, we had that repaired. Then we had some other remediation. I do not, no, we do not have a repair for all the things that have been brought out over the last eight months, meaning the floor pan that exists on the backside of the building, the trusses, and/or the analysis as to whether the existing structure would meet current building code at 100 pounds per square foot. So at that point, we have stopped. There is not an engineered analysis in my files that show anything other than the repair of the front wall, the architectural study... that show anything other than the repair of the front wall, the architectural study doubling it. It didn't address the back wall, and it didn't address all building codes that's be required for us to rebuild it.
Skip, if we have, if we choose to repair the building, is your equipment okay in the building?
The equipment, the, we originally slated to replace this fiber anyway. This fiber's seventeen years old, and it's improper fiber. The admin building was Phillips Drive many years ago. So the county network started in that building. And this fiber was run by Technology Services back, back in the day, and it was the incorrect fiber to begin with. This multi-mode fiber is supposed to be single-mode. Multi-mode fiber is designed to run between floors, basically. Nine hundred feet, I believe, is the max. I'd have to get my numbers out on that. But we've got seven thousand feet of multi-mode fiber. This has never been designed to run at the speed we're trying to push, especially all the cameras we have at animal control and the new cameras we have in jail annex. We're pushing so much data across the network, it just can't handle it. So the fiber for the last couple of years, I've been trying to get replaced regardless of the building anyway. We really wanted to move it into the police annex, I mean, the sheriff's annex, sorry, just because that's a hardened building and manned twenty-four hours. There's many reasons why to go ahead and do this, but just because the building is coming down, it's become a much more urgent, I would say. But the fiber needs to be replaced anyway, regardless.
So if we replaced the fiber and left the equipment where it was at, what would that cost?
If we replaced the entire fiber and moved the equipment, it would still be the two-hundred forty-seven thousand.
But if we didn't move the equipment?
If we did not move it, if we put it into an outside building, it would be about seventy-five thousand, I believe, to move it. The problem with that is the fiber companies will not certify the fiber when they move it. If you move this old multi-mode fiber, it will never pass inspection. So they won't guarantee it. You move it outside into a building, and they'll say, look, if it works, it works. If it don't, it don't.
So what risk are we at if we leave the equipment and the fiber in place until we can get a solid cost on a repair of the building? I hadn't seen any documents. What it would cost to repair the building?
Mr. Wilson, you're looking dead at me.
And we haven't had the engineered analysis that went the distance, that looked at all things wrong with the building. The front, the stem walls on either side, and then the back part of the floor plan, as well as the building code that would have to currently meet. Remember, if we repair the building and the building costs are fifty percent or greater, we've got to meet every code, which would mean things like vertical access. And now we, we address that because we've got an upper and lower level you could drive to either side. But there's still, the issue is structurally, as to what will we have if we invest in it? Will it meet code? And that would require an engineered analysis and an engineer to seal that it would meet code, and here's what the cost estimate would be. Once we did that, it came to be an economic question is, what would we have? What would be the value of the building? Is it for thirty or fifty years? And that's the plan that I've advocated on long. If we're gonna do it, let's make sure it fits that test. But there is not anything in hand right now that addresses all things about the building. We've addressed them piecemeal as we've learned something. But every time we've gone into the building, something else comes up.
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Commissioner Wilson, I've been out and looked at the building. Mr. Bonner's correct. Every time we look at the building, there's, there's another problem. There's another issue. My firm, gosh, it's been twenty-five years ago, maybe thirty years ago, actually did the repairs out there. Some of the issues that are not seen on the surface is the loading and unloading of the trusses for so many years. You know, metal has fatigue, and you know, as a firefighter, you never trust a truss. Metal has fatigue. And these trusses have probably been overloaded for so many years to the point they're not fixable, they're not repairable. So I had left it with Hutch. I can't make the determination as a commissioner to condemn a building. So I had left it with Hutch to actually get an RFP out to get an engineer in, a structural engineer, to review the building. And if he sees fit and is willing to sign and seal that it is a structurally sound building and can be repaired, then we would have to go in that direction. And that's, I think, we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. We need to make sure that building, again, I want something in writing that the building needs to come down before we move anything. Have you had anything come across for an RFP?
We did the studies less than fifty thousand dollars, so it didn't require a formal solicitation. We could do it off the three-quote process. And there wasn't, there was an engineer that came out and offered a report, correct? Yes. So that has taken place.
Okay. Well, we, we probably need to follow through with that. I would look to the board, you know, if we're all in agreement. But I, until we get the answer, you know, is this building repairable? The cost of the building to be repaired, moving the equipment just seems a little premature. I do agree. I like the idea of it going to the sheriff's complex. I understand where that, that's not going anywhere. There's somebody there all the time. Because it, it does frighten me to think that somebody could, terrorists could attack that in Cripless County, absolutely Cripless. But before I would be able to really do anything, I would have to know what we're doing with that building.
Sure.
So my, my motion at this time would be to allow Rod to put together an RFP, to have an engineer come out and, and look at the building in a structural, and look at the trusses, go over all the loads, do some, maybe some test or two, just, and then see what direction we need to go.
And before we accept the motion, we do need to clarify that this, again, is regarding a significant factor regarding the fiber replacement. Because that is seen in the bulk of the cost estimate that we're speaking about. And then, of course, there are other questions that I personally want to continue to think through, or what did the cost impact to the general fund slash fund balance? Those items as well. So again, we've, we've got motion again for the RFP. And any other questions or comments before we move forward with a second?
Do, do we need to vote on that? It's, it's under the amount.
This is discussion only at this point?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so very good. Yeah, because again, thank you for the reminder. This is discussion only. So again, I just encourage each of our commissioners, again, to write your notes, to make sure that we do address them to staff. Mr. Gray, you have other comments?
Yeah, an RFP may not be required. I just want to stipulate that. We'll take the necessary action as requested within the context of the purchasing code.
Lewis, just instruct staff.
Yeah, we just need the full picture of, you know, again, replacement costs. You've given us an overview today of what it would take to demolish the building. But again, let's put it all together with replacement as well, and then also some impacts to how it impacts our fund balance or general fund as well.
Let's do two different things here. One is actually, is the building worth fixing? The next phase would be to see if the building, how much it costs to repair it. Let's not spend the money on how much it would cost to repair it until we get an engineer that tells us it's worth repairing. Because I don't want to spend that money without, you need to. So I, I would like to instruct staff, which I can, or county manager, to instruct staff to do a, get a structural engineer to give us a report on that building.
There's another consideration. I don't want to get lost in all this. If you're gonna do any major renovation, you're gonna have to remove the cable. That hub cannot stay there. I don't think the contractor can work around it with the kinds of things that is over its head and beneath it. So that'll kind of expedite some of the decision-making, because the construct, the constructive period of that fiber in either one of your alternatives, to fix or not fix, the constructive period, that would have to take place before you could do this other. So just keep in mind, there's not a contractor who's gonna want to work around the sophistication of that hub. It needs to be relocated first on either one of your options. If you do nothing, you're fine, until the building, some other resolve comes. I don't think that's where the board's going. But in, for your next meetings, I think you should probably look at, go ahead and look at the relocation, relocation of the cable, because there's a constructive period, and that gives you time to get your engineered analysis in and decide what you want to do with the building. But in either case, that hub's gotta go someplace, either outside with the existing or relocation to the sheriff's annex.
Okay, very good. You've heard the comments and questions from the board, so we'll look to county management to help us review back. And then we'll, again, make this an agenda item in the future. Thank you very much. I appreciate you gentlemen. Very good. We will now move to item twenty regarding the ordinance to amend sections three point two-two-one and three point two-two-one point eight-one-eight of the Henry County Court Code of Ordinance entitled Public Participation. And before Mr. Jock Satter begins his presentation, I would like to announce that the time allowed for public comments in the ordinance has been increased from three minutes to five minutes, which were previously printed. And so at this time, I will acknowledge our county attorney, Mr. Jock Satter, for the presentation.
Good morning and Happy New Year. At the board's request, I've drafted this ordinance to amend the public participation sections of the county code. The ordinance that you had before you accomplishes a number of things. And I'm just gonna walk through very quickly in outline format what this ordinance does. This ordinance calls for a public comment section portion of every regularly scheduled board meeting. It does not automatically call for public comment at a called meeting, special called meeting, or an emergency meeting. The time for public comment would be five minutes for each person wishing to speak. As is present in the current ordinance and resolution, people wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting. What we did in this section is we removed the requirement for people to give their home address. I think that's unnecessary, and I think it bothered a lot of people. We also allowed for any public comment, anybody who signs up for public comment for something that appears on the agenda, the board can move that public comment out of the public comment section, put it under that agenda item if you'd like. You can leave it under public comments as well. We have carried over the existing rules regarding public comment, made them part of the ordinance, which prohibits personal and pertinent slanderous or profane remarks. Again, we have authorized the board to open public comment on any agenda item it sees fit. So if there's an item on the agenda and you want to open public comment by vote, the board could open public comment under that item, under that agenda item. We did not impact public hearings. There are certain things that by statute you are required to conduct a public hearing. This resolution, this ordinance, will not impact those. So your, your zoning matters, a lot of, some of your CD BG-type grants and some of your other public participation things require public hearings. And we've also prohibited video multimedia presentations during the public comment section. And that is the short version of the public comment, public comment, public participation ordinance. We made it ordinance as opposed to a resolution, just so it's easier to find. If you seek that resolution on municipal code today, you can't find it. So we're gonna make it part of the resolution or part of the ordinance itself. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this on effect civic, nonprofit, and church organizations?
No, you, the board retains power over its agenda. If there's an organization that the board wants to hear from, you simply can make it an agenda item, and they can appear in front of the board. But this resolution does not, unlike the old resolution, this, this ordinance does not allow someone to demand to be placed on the agenda. Leaves the setting of the agenda entirely up to the board.
One more question. The five-minute public comment section, is it limited to or not limited to five minutes?
It is limited to five minutes, but the board can vote to authorize more than five minutes if it chooses.
Okay.
The original draft brought to you had three minutes. The request of a number of board members, we've increased that back to five minutes.
So when, when people sign up for public comment, we can extend the five minutes if we wish?
The board can vote to extend the five minutes. It takes board action.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments?
Well, I would like to make a statement regarding this. Basically, I would like to speak briefly on the change to the public comment portion of our commission meetings. We've received complaints and concerns that the allotment of fifteen-minute increments for longer public comment has resulted in greater time to meetings, resulting in a delay of conduct, conducting county business. There have also been some complaints regarding how the longer increments of public comment have been used. And in some cases, bordering on slanderers are at the very least inappropriate speech. Through careful consideration and thoughtful contemplation, the board has collectively decided to eliminate the fifteen increments of public comment. We want to be respectful to everyone's right to speak, while being mindful of the public's right to see county business conducted in an efficient and productive manner. As your elected Board of Commissioners, we make ourselves available to our citizens in several ways, and we encourage our citizens to contact us to discuss concerns or issues. In no way, and let me just reemphasize this, in no way is this action an attempt to silence citizens. In fact, it is meant to do the opposite. It is intended to give all citizens an equal voice in our public meetings, allotting an even amount of time while enabling county officials to conduct the people's business effectively and efficiently. So I make that statement. Are there any other comments from this board? Yes.
I just have a statement to make. You know, the decisions that are made up here that I make are not made in a vacuum. I keep track of complaints that I get from citizens. And ironically, you know, I've said this before, the number one complaint is about grass and right-ofways and trash and right-ofways. And as we go down the list, about the number fifth complaint I get is about public comment. I would say, after we have a public hearing about rezoning, I'll get phone calls from the citizens who were here, who had never been here before, never been to a meeting. And the first words out of their mouth are, you need to do something about public comment. And this has been a, a theme for the last two years. I mean, I've had so many phone calls and meet people in person and complaints about public comment in the last two years. It's, it's, it's one of those things, if the citizens want it, I'm obliged to do it for them. I work for the citizens. And one thing you gotta learn, not every citizen has the same view. But again, this is a complaint that just keeps coming up. So again, it's been a lot of thought put into this, and I think it's the right move. And again, it's what the citizens ask for. So with that, I.
Well, thank you, District Four. We've heard questions from District One as well. Any comments or questions from District Three?
The things that are said here today, I've, I've had the same complaints about public comments.
District Five? All right. We've heard from each of you. We now call for a motion to vote.
Move to approve, Chair.
Got a motion by District Four, second by District Five. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Acknowledged by raising your hand. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Jock Satter.
Thank you.
We will now move to the item twenty-one, which is the approval of minutes from our December sixth, twenty sixteen Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Are there any comments or questions or revisions? Now call for a motion for approval. Got a motion by District Three, second by District Five. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Well, we now will move into comments by the commissioners and then myself. Any comments, District Five?
I just want to say, welcome to our new commissioners, Johnny June and Ms. Clemmons, or Commissioner Clemmons, who are, who is not here today, but I want to welcome you to the board. And just want to say I look forward to working with all of you. I did follow your campaigns, and you guys worked very hard on the campaign trail. And just want to say, you know, the way I view how somebody is gonna work as a commissioner is by the way they campaign. So as I watched you guys work, I just knew that we were getting some great colleagues to join, you know, joining us on the, on the Henry County Board. So thank you so much, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
I'm there. Thank you.
Commissioner Bonner?
I'd also like to welcome all the new board members. Madam Chair, you did a great job today, and thank you so much. And I'm just looking forward to this year, and we're gonna move the county in a positive direction. Thank you.
Very good.
Welcome to new board members. It's a new year, new day, and a new board. Very optimistic that next couple of years, it will get some things done. And that we'll all be on the same accord and all move in the same direction. So welcome. If you need anything, don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, we'll keep in mind of Commissioner Clemmons as well as part of this team. But my comments to you are, first of all, I want to give honor and respect to Chairman Smith and every other previous chair of this Henry County Board of Commissioners. I also say to each and every one of you that just as hard as I worked during four election cycles for this position, I will continue to work hard for the people of Henry County. My commitment is to use my God-given talents, skills, and abilities to work with this board, to find those common goals, to definitely continue to listen to the people. So I say thank you to those who are here today. the people. So I say thank you to those who are here today. I thank you for those who made comments today. And I don't know where the camera is, to those who are watching online, we thank you as well. We do encourage more participation here. We are here to serve we, the people. And so we do not take that for granted. And I will say personally, I will not take that for granted. I do encourage you to please continue to help us here in Henry County, to be the most admired and respected county, not just here in the state of Georgia, but here in the United States of America. So I say, God bless America and God bless Henry County. Thank you for this opportunity to share my comments. At this time, we will now discuss and review the upcoming meetings and events. Our next meeting is scheduled regularly on January of the seventeenth at six-thirty. The meeting following that in February is February of the seventh at nine o'clock a.m. as a regular meeting. And then on February the twenty-first, that meeting has been canceled. So there's no further ado. I now will call for a motion to convene into executive discussion to discuss personnel matters, and will now ask our attorney, Mr. Jock Satter, to speak further.
We just need a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Okay, we got a motion by District Four, uh, Five, I'm sorry.
Second.
Got a second by District Four. All, any comments, questions? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. We will now adjourn to executive session.